I will now call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for December 11, 2023. Ms. Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Simpson?
Here.
Sorry, Mayor Proton Mormon?
Here.
Councilmember Faray? Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Ambrose?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer? Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
I move to excuse Councilmembers Faray and Pfeiffer from this evening's proceedings.
Thank you. If all council members will cast their votes. And Mr. Mormon, how do you vote? Thank you very much. Sorry, Bob Pfeiffer is not locked out here on the system. I'll leave that to the city attorney. No, please don't.
Mayor Simpson, would you mind calling for a voice vote?
Absolutely. So I will go ahead and call for a voice vote at this time. Councilmember Mormon, you have already voted aye by voice vote. So Councilmember Ambrose?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Marriott?
Yes.
And I vote aye as well, so that passes five to zero. Councilmember Faray and Councilmember Pfeiffer are excused absences. Next, we will be moving on to this evening's workshops. The first workshop on the agenda is a Bond Project Update. At this time, I'd like to invite Britton Thomas up to the podium to present the workshop.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Welcome new members. Tonight, we're going to be presenting the bond projects. This includes our transportation projects as well as the utility projects. There we go. First, we're going to start off with our transportation projects, and then we'll move to our utility projects after that. I'm going to take just a moment here to introduce our team to our new council members. On the Ralston Road project is Padmini Gudapudi, and she'll be presenting that. And on Seventy Second Avenue, we have David Bernard. And then presenting all the utility projects tonight is Mary Stahl. And this will be our agenda for our transportation projects. We'll talk about budget, construction, our schedule, our challenges and risks, and then our community outreach. And with that, we'll move on to Ralston Road, and I'll turn it over to Padmini.
Good evening, dear Mayor and all the council members. First, I'd like to start my update on Ralston Road Phase Two with the budget. The initial budget on this project is close to nineteen million dollars, and with all the additional scope in the design and the construction, the current approved budget with the recent two change orders is at twenty-four and a half million dollars. We still have a change order that is pending with our construction contractor for the additional time and monetary resources associated with that. Moving on to the construction phasing, this project is designed to build in three construction phases. Notice to proceed one where all the utility relocations are anticipated, and right now, all the utility relocations are complete. Coming to the NTP Two, Estes to Yukon North Side Widening, Garrison to Estes South Side Widening. All the roadway work in these sections is complete. I still have a ninety-nine percent because we still have some of the streetscape and landscape work that is remaining. Moving on to the NTP Three, Garrison to Estes North Side Widening and Estes to Yukon South Side Widening. So this is where major portion of the work is done in this past quarter. They finished all the underground utility work except at Yukon, which our contractor is wrapping up by end of this week. So I put it as a ninety percent complete because we still have some of the temporary construction easement improvements in Southeast Corner, also some of the streetscape and landscape remaining in those two stretches. Moving on to the financial status and the project schedule. So far, we spent about fifteen and a half million in the construction budget that is accounting to ninety-one percent. And overall project budget, we spent about close to ninety percent. In the past quarter update, I mentioned that we are still trying to work with our contractor to finish paving by end of this year. I'm happy to let you know that we completed all the roadway widening tasks before Thanksgiving. We still have some of the remaining work related to streetscape landscaping due to weather issues. That remaining work is actually pushing our completion date to the spring 2024. Coming to the completed activities that our contractor finished during this quarter. They finished all the underground utilities, both on the north and south side, except at Yukon, which is going to be done pretty soon. And also the curb and gutter replacement, any removal and replacement of the sidewalk on the southeast side or the southwest side. There are still some of the sidewalk work that we have remaining that we are anticipating to be done by end of January. So the major chunk of work that they finished is a top lift paving on both sides, both north and south side, and striping. This was done before Thanksgiving, and they were able to open all four lanes for traffic for the Thanksgiving holidays. They also finished the median work and the soil work inside the medians, but they still have the planting work. They haven't planted any bushes since it's very cold out there, so they're planning to, they're moving that planting to next season, spring. Also, all the median work is complete. Right now, on the project stretch, we have all the lanes open except, and all the side streets as well, except Yukon Street. So right now, there might be some rolling closures, one lane during the daytime, but all the four lanes on a project stretch are open for traffic. Since we completed majority of the work in this project, I actually put together before and after pictures here. This is one of the pictures. It shows improvements at Ammon Street, right in front of the City Hall. Just to give your location perspective, I'm trying to see if I can point. Okay, the bottom right side corner is where, right side. Okay, thank you. Right side corner is where the City Hall nameplate shows up. So you can see how two-lane widening improvement actually on the right side picture, whereas on the left side, it's only a single lane. You can see how it looked. There's the same intersection early 2021, and also after we did the final paving, how that improvements actually looked on the right side picture. The similar one in front of K8 School near Balsam Street intersection, you can see how these improvements are looking on the right side picture compared with the left side one. So the left side one is a beginning very early into the construction stage, and then right side. I actually took a snapshot of these pictures from our drone shots, so where we can actually show the improvements from like a little bit higher elevation, so. Moving on to the upcoming activities or some of the current activities that our contractor is accomplishing, like a stormwater work, as I mentioned already at Yukon Street. This is the last underground work connecting the Phase One of our Alston Road work to the Phase Two. So once this is done, they're planning on opening the Yukon Side Street by end of this week or beginning of next week. There are still some of the sidewalk removal work that is happening as we go into the full winter. They're also working on installing the neighborhood monuments, which is like a streetscape work. They're also working on finishing up all temporary construction easement before we actually see, trying to finish before end of this year. I'm not sure whether we can completely done it, but we may have one or two parts left with the temporary construction easements. But their plan is to finish everything by end of this year. As I mentioned already, both travel lanes are open, but due to some of the median work and some of the issues with the side street where the tree grates, where we did not approve our contractor's work, they're actually removing and replacing them. So that's why you see probably one lane closures here and there during the daytime. By the time they actually leave the site, they're actually keeping all the four lanes open for the traffic. Once they come back, so wherever the closure is needed, that section of the road, like just a single lane, will be closed. So that's how they're trying to accommodate of traffic for all four lanes whenever they're not working. Moving on to the challenges and risks, I've shown a, like, I would say probably long list of challenges and risks. So I wanted to shorten it, and then here, these are the few challenges and risks that we encountered. We were able to like pass through the challenges in the past quarter. The main challenges that we encountered are utility accommodating, utility connections for the developers, XL gas line relocations, also giving a business access, access to all the business owners during the top lift paving. That was one of the challenges that our contractor has to go through because some of the businesses don't have access other than the Ralston side. Also, once we opened all four lanes for traffic, we did encounter a different issue. It's like a speeding and distracted driving. The picture that is shown on this slide here, it's not from somewhere. It's actually on Ralston recently at a Brentwood Street. So due to distracted driving. So we are trying to see what are the best ways to let public know that even though we've opened our traffic in all four lanes, it is still a construction zone, and then we still have a reduced speed limits on the project stretch. Moving on to the community outreach and how we are actually communicating with our business owners and the stakeholders. Both Hammond side and our city side, we have a communication coordinators who are helping and coordinating with the business owners and informing about upcoming, if there are any closures or any work that is going to affect their businesses. So this is one of the recent articles that came in Arvada Press where they are actually informing all the public that we were able to finish a top lift paving before year end. With that, I think most of you guys already seen this. The original completion is May 3, 2023. So last, in my last quarter update, we were also anticipating a similar spring 2024 as a completion, but we were not sure about the top lift. But here we are with the top lift completed, and the road is open to public. But due to some of the constraints with the planting and streetscaping, our anticipated completion date is moving to spring of 2024. So during, from December to spring 2024, we are not anticipating significant amount of impacts with respect to traffic wise, but it's only streetscape and landscaping work that we are anticipating to be done in the spring of 2024. With all the checklist items, we are hoping we can start the initial warranty period in spring of 2024. With that, I would like to conclude my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'll open it to council for questions. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the, I've been looking at the Ask Arvada questions, and one that keeps coming up is speeding on Brooks. It's kind of like an ancillary issue from people taking Brooks as a detour. Has the city taken a look at that?
Yes, in the last, I think last quarter presentation also, Mayor Simpson also mentioned the same concern. So we tried to actually see how we can reduce or put like digital signboards saying that reduce the speed limits or the speed limit is only twenty-five miles per hour. But, so since we are completing most of the work and we are opening traffic on all four lanes on Ralston Road, we were not anticipating, since there were no detours, we are not anticipating significant amount of actually traffic going onto the Brooks Drive. So we don't have any speed limit signs or digital signboards on a Brooks other than a regular signboards because we are not anticipating any detours onto the Brooks Drive. We haven't received any complaints after we opened all four lanes onto the Ralston about speeding on a Brooks Drive.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Ambrose?
Well, I want to commend the city on this project because I know it was really hard to get this done and appreciate it being done in time for Thanksgiving. One question I have is on the distracted driving. Has there been any plans or ideas about how much of this is distracted driving versus how much of it is a new traffic pattern from people being used to a two-lane road now to being a four-lane road?
I would say definitely it's lot more open. So since we don't have lot of cones out there, so public thinks that this project is complete. So that's why they started driving at higher speed limits at like forty-five. So we still have a speed limit signs and digital signboards at the starting of the project stretch. I would say we do have a rolling traffic pattern on the project stretch that may be causing a little bit of confusion in the starting. But now we don't have, like, once we are done with all the median work, we are trying to reduce that change in traffic pattern as much as possible.
Thank you.
I actually have a couple of questions myself. You had noticed the plant note, you had noted that the planting will begin in the spring, which makes absolute sense. As Colorado, we don't tend to plant in the winter here. Could you advise us on what kind of plants we're expecting? And you noted irrigation work, so how much irrigation work is going in as well?
So they also completed a significant of irrigation work in the medians, also in the side garden beds. So the planting, there are different species. So I'm working with the landscape architect, our Parks Department, on the plans, approval stages and everything. So we have a list of plans in our plan. So once we have those lists, our Parks Department, actually Parks and the landscaping department go out and make sure they are the right plants. And if we have any bushes, they're the right bushes. They're not, I custom to have a lot of water. Where we don't need a lot of water to maintain those plants. So even though I don't have a much understanding about the plants, I'm actually coordinating with our Parks and Landscaping to make sure that we have a right plants that are actually planting on the Ralston.
Perfect. That was, my concern was that we just had low water usage. And then you had mentioned the occasional one-lane closures and whatnot. When we do have those miscellaneous closures, do you anticipate that some will take a decent amount of time or that they're both, that they are relatively short projects that'll last a matter of hours? And for those that do last a matter of hours, roughly what times are we expecting to do that work so that we have that one-lane closure?
So it's not one-lane closure on entire project stretch. I would say like a section by section. So sometimes where we have like a couple of sidewalk panels that they need to remove because they're not meeting our city standards. So that probably lasts for a day of closure. So what they're, right now, what they're doing is, when they start the work at eight AM, they'll start the closure. By the time they leave the site, they're actually opening that stretch with a caution tape in case if they don't want public to walk on that sidewalk. So they're not actually like continuous closures. I would say probably they are too, depends on the type of the work that we have. So, but these are rolling closures.
No, that's perfect. That's exactly what I understood it to be. My only recommendation is to, if they are, you know, closing for shorter periods of time, if at all possible, to keep them closed like after the morning rush hour just to help drivers get through there more quickly and on to work because I know it'll be frustrating for those that get backed up and are late to work because they were expecting traffic to be flowing, and then it was more delayed than extra. So that's what I have. Councilmember Marriott?
Yeah, so it's good to see this wrapping up or being, at least looking to a driver looking done. And I want to compliment your team as well as the contractor for the time of this construction, keeping the access to businesses open as much as possible. Living right here and driving down it all the time, I was pretty much always able to get to any business. Even when you couldn't get to a street, you could get to a business. So I think that was a great work. However, I do think the businesses along this corridor have suffered mightily over a couple of years. I mean, this has been a huge imposition on them and giant financial harm done to them over time, unavoidable. I don't think there's anything else that can be done. So I have a suggestion for my fellow council members that we think about funding a specific grant program to be administered by IEDA, who does this kind of stuff all the time, that would fund specific either exterior or landscaping or signage grants for the businesses only along this corridor. So that as we have this brand-new road, brand-new streetscape, and brand-new everything looks good, that we give some real assistance to the businesses who have suffered dramatically with upgrading their look for whatever works for them, whether that be landscaping or whether it be signage or exterior improvements, so that they can get a, you know, both improve their look but also give them a shot at building their businesses back up to make up for what they've suffered over the last couple of years. So I'd ask my fellow council members to think about that, and I'll bring it back up another time.
Okay. Thank you so much, Councilmember Marriott. Anything else for the good of the order?
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, everyone.
And again, excellent work to your team. I know this has been an extraordinarily difficult project, and I speak for pretty much the whole city when I say I am so glad to be driving on a much smoother Ralston road.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening. I'm David Bernard, the West Seventy Second Avenue Project. We are a little behind Ralston, but we have a lot of parallel successes that have happened in this past quarter here. I'll start with our rightaways here. We have about seventy-two properties along the corridor that have all been closed, and we're working on actually completing the work in a lot of those, in a handful of those yards right now, getting them completed to a level that is comparable to what they were before, before we acquired the land and tore it up and put walls and roads and everything in there. This picture here is where we're currently working on the north extension of Oak Street that's going to, into two big properties that this will help hopefully encourage development of those lots and make, bring it up to speed with the rest of the area. So here's our construction phasing here. We had our CP One a couple of years ago relocated most of the utilities. We're finally cleaning up about two or three items in these last couple of weeks, and we will have very little utility work left in the project that is left over from that package. And we're currently in the, towards the end of Construction Package Two from Swadley to Oak Street. And then the, we can begin, we're in the design phase for Construction Package Three, mainly because of the railroad underpass, and that, we now have identified about an eight-to-nine month delay at a minimum between the end of CP Two and the start of CP Three as we work through these design challenges here, as we continue to work through these design challenges that have taken quite a long time at this point. With our budget right now, we're just over fifty percent spent right there. And then we have our owner's rep, our inspectors that work for me and help manage construction management for the project. We processed a change order for them. Because of the additional time on CP Three, we processed that change order in October, and so those are new numbers there, including that change order. And then our design is mostly spent, and the remaining is for activities or design reviews that come up as we run into challenges in the field. Shows the money spent for CP One and where we're currently at on the right in CP Two. Where this really reflects, mostly reflects the work that is done. We've got a huge, with the paving of the top lift, we've got a huge amount of work done in the last few weeks. So we're going to eat into that remaining portion quite significantly here. But we are, we are at about ninety percent done for CP Two at this point. Just showing some pictures here of where we're at. This was one of the properties, the Sunrise Village Condos, that was being developed concurrently with the project. We put a median in front of their entrance, so now traffic can only turn right onto Seventy Second. And we also had to modify their entrance with the ADA walkway in the middle here that also kind of forces people to only turn in the right direction. This was the median construction that happened last month with the red concrete here. The construction on the left and then the finished product on the right when it was at its newest. Then biggest accomplishment this month was the paving of the top lift across the whole project. This was in the middle of Sims and Seventy Second, the busiest intersection on the project. And we were able to keep most of the, we had to close it temporarily for a day or two at a time as we paved through it. And then once the pavement was cool, we were able to open it up every night and reset it again for the next day's work in the morning. But during most of the paving, we were able to keep a lot of the traffic through, as you can see on that right picture. We're paving right next to where all the cars are turning on the Seventy Second. Upcoming work, we have finishing a lot of ramps and stairs that are associated with the new sidewalks. We've upgraded everything to be ADA compliant. So this is a ramp that, the Oberon School empties out onto Seventy Second here from their football fields and track area. And it was just a small asphalt path, and we made it a concrete stairs with this ADA ramp alongside it as well. We have to put railings on some of these things still in the manufacturing of that railing. It takes quite a while. So those are some of the miscellaneous things we're working on now. We're very fortunate in November to get weathered. It was warm enough to finish the top lift. The requirement's a little more stringent there, so we got a really good run of weather the week before Thanksgiving, and our subcontractor worked really well to schedule everything and squeeze all the paving in without compromising the quality at all. And similarly, last week, we were able to get a lot of our striping in because that's our biggest safety requirement before we can open all four lanes of the road. So we got all of the weather-dependent striping in last week, and we hope to finish the rest of it this week. And so no, without any unforeseen delays, we hopefully get the roadway open here to all four lanes from Swadley to Oak in about, in the next two to six weeks, give or take weather or anything else that comes up. Currently working on that northern extension of Oak, as well as how we tie in the project at Swadley there. We have these big bike lanes on the project, and the road narrows again at Swadley. So we have to, it's a little more of a complex transition to pavement to get the bike lanes and sidewalk back down to the narrow widths. And then similar to Ralston, we're going to be doing the landscaping all, we're working on some of the landscaping now, installing the water lines and sprinklers and such, but we won't be doing any of the plants and actual season-dependent work till next spring. And similar to Ralston, we anticipate, once we open the roadway, we'll only need some closures during the day around the work that we're actually doing. And that way, it doesn't impact the traffic as much. And every day, it's back to four lanes once we're done working the day. And we'll do our best, as we have a long time, the contractor's done our best to keep these away from the school. We have two schools on the site, so keeping the, those rush hours in particular, as well as the evening rush hour separate, making our work happen outside of those times. Going on to the railroad design, we recently, the last meeting, we had just submitted our, we had just received approval for our sixty percent bridge plans. We're currently working on getting our shoe fly track, the detour track, as well as our detour roadway approved. We have a big walkthrough tomorrow morning, and that's a big requirement of that next step in the design. And then hopefully should have the hundred percent bridge plan submitted here in the next few weeks. And we're just slowly, step by step, getting our way through this process. And then we have to get into more of the administrative agreements with the POC application and the CNM agreement that are all requirements. We're trying to streamline these things and see if we can do work on them simultaneously. And we're still identifying those opportunities to hopefully shrink the gap that we have between the two phases. And this is that same timeline in a different format, but it shows, hopefully, we can get our NTP in construction started at the end of this, at the end of 2024. And at the current schedule, that puts our construction into early 2027. Challenges and risks are mainly the railroad and the railroad crossing right now. The, just working through the design process and all the agreements, as well as with everything else with the pandemic in 2020 and the inflation afterwards, all of our prices are different, and everything's gone up. One of the major steps is procuring the steel for the railroad bridge. We're currently reassessing whether it's time to do that or not. It's all based on, now that we've gotten, we've finally achieved those certain milestones in the design process where we can reassess when is the right time to get this steel purchased. And then with that long lead time, it would be ready for when we're in construction. And we have, we know, we expect it to exceed budget because of these costs, and we've got the price projections pretty well calculated at this point. And we're, it's just a matter of where we are in the railroad design is when we'll start to pursue those options. This is just a quick graph of showing that, where we are in the process right now. The dash line is how we predict to spend the rest of the money. now, the dash line is how we predict to spend the rest of the money. Then with our community outreach, this is a picture of one of the crossings at Oak right at school time when all the middle school kids are, are getting across the street. We have all these lights pretty well, the crosswalks are all in use now and mostly ninety-five percent at their full operating capacity right now. There's little punch list items we're taking care of. Most of our complaints have just been construction in general. These projects have been going on for a couple of years, so people are just tired of it, but they're really happy. We're getting some positive reactions now to see that we are getting the pavement on the road, we are getting the stripes on the road. Those are things that people can understand rather than just seeing the cones and the delays every day. Some complaints from a few of the homes we had to take away, they're, they can, they can't turn left anymore. We put medians in front of their driveways and the roadway's in a new configuration now, so people that have lived on the site for twenty, forty years are, are just frustrated by those things. And then we'll continue to work with the schools to make sure that they're coordinating with their pickup times and the, we did improve a lot to the Lincoln entrance and we just added some new lights today on that, on Oak Street that was one of the concerns of Lincoln Academy. It was the, because now a lot of their after-school events are at night now and they're trying to make sure everything's, everything's well lit for the whole area. And then, yeah, with that, I have any questions? This is just a, one of the positive quotes here, the, at the corner of Sims and Seventy Second, we did a lot of work with the First United Church of Arvada and we finished their parking lot in the past couple of weeks and, and they're, they're super happy about it. So this is, we've, we have about, we've had basically seventy of these partnerships throughout the project, some of them bigger than others and this, this one, we've been able to communicate with the, Chuck is the representative of the church and he's been, he's been really communicative and, and able to work with us and, and we really appreciate that and it's, it's well worked out and a real happy story for, for the project at this point. And that's, that's all I have if there's any questions.
Perfect, I'll turn it over to council for questions. And Councilmember Mormon, I, thank you. Councilmember Ambrose, we see your hand there.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to first show my appreciation to you and the team on this project. It is a major project that goes right through District One and a little, I mean, obviously there's some differences from Ralston Road, but one of the major ones is this impacts more residences and so I really appreciate all the work and, and individual specific work that you have done with certain residences as they're directly impacted by this, so thank you so much for that and I'm starting to hear positive feedback about that, so I wanted to first express that. And then second of all, the, the railroad, I want to ask, so since we've gotten the sixty percent approval, is your sense that, that is being, having a much more productive relationship? We are having a better productive relationship with the railroad as we move forward?
I'd say so. We've gotten more communication than we had. We went through a, a point where the communication didn't seem to be as good as it is now, so we're, we're having, we've opened more dialogues and been able to work with the reviewers at our level and, and just, it keeps slugging through this long process and that's, we're slowly seeing those results.
Well, I'm glad to hear that and please continue to keep us updated on that progress. I know that we have reached out to our, our Senator and Representative for Congress from this area and enlisted their assistance with that and so if we need to go back to them, we can, so please let us know how that progresses. My, I guess my, I do have a couple of questions just to check in on, so the, the two places of, of challenges that I've heard a lot about on this project are, one, traffic backing up on Sims, I'm, I'm hoping that that has pretty much been alleviated now with, with that being open, is, is that your assessment?
Yes, when we, we paved Sims, the lower lifts on Sims back in October and right away we were able to get wider lanes there and that cleared up a lot of the traffic and as well as, a lot of that was also due to the Oberon School, they late, they made their morning time an hour later, so it's offset from the rush hour. And then when we, we just paved two weeks ago, we had to keep some of the lanes closed, so that was some of the complaints were about specific lanes, we still needed to keep, keep closed to keep the traffic flowing correctly and that just got opened up last week, so there should be, there should be no, no more backups on Sims that are worthy of, of any, any complaints. It's, now we have to worry about people driving too fast because it's so wide open now, so that's the other side of that, but it's, it's, it looks really good especially in the, after this last week, there's so much room out there that I'm not used to having in all those, with all the extra lanes we put in.
Great, thank you for that. And I guess the second piece is I've, I've heard a lot of concern about residents coming out of the, the north side of Seventy Second near Kipling and that neighborhood there and then turning left, going east on Seventy Second towards Kipling, having a, a major challenge with being able to see and safely turn out of there with the way the construction and traffic would get backed up. Do you know if that's been improved at all?
It, we're, we're working on that still. We have to remove some vegetation which, which we're, we're, with a major task being completed now, we're, we're starting to really focus on a lot of these little smaller details that are, that are also very critical, so we hopefully, hopefully get that done in the next few weeks and that should help free up a lot of the site on that, that intersection there at Miller, both at Miller and Lee and the, the traffic does get backed up there simply because it's the one lane in that section still until we get the CP3 portion built.
Okay, thank you for, for working on that, I appreciate it.
You're, you're welcome, thank you for your comments.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes, thank you for all of this information, it's, it's great and I can go back and tell people about how we're progressing on this, on this project. So one of the comments that my neighbors had were that when they're on Oak going north and then turning onto Seventy Second going west, that there were multiple lanes of, of construction cones and they didn't know where to go and they almost went head-on into somebody. So I actually went up and took a look and I could see where they were concerned. Is there, has that been remedied?
Yes, it has. We, we tried to keep that as simple as possible, but that's our challenge right now is that the, that's the boundary between the CP2 and CP3, so now when we open that, we'll have four lanes and it just goes down to two and so we've had to modify that. It's happened in the past couple of weeks now as we're, we're turning, the one lane on Seventy Second is going to be a right turn only lane onto Oak and that'll help straighten that other part and then as far, as for turning into the head-on traffic, that'll be better marked when we finish the striping and the cones will all be gone, so that won't be, there'll be more room for error as they turn, there'll be one turn lane turning into the two lanes of, of Seventy Second and that should clear all that up. But that's, that's part of the challenge right now is the CP2 and CP3, we're supposed to be really close to each other, so we could just go from one to the other and now we have this long temporary gap and I, I got a list of all these things that we're, we got to see what the need is before, and then make the right changes to, to keep the traffic flowing safely, especially there along the Oak and Lincoln Academy on the, on the Seventy Second side of Lincoln Academy. That's one of our big challenges right now is identifying what's needed and then seeing what we can do about it.
Seeing no other lights, thank you so much for your hard work on this. For any residents watching, CP2 and CP3 are Construction Package Two and Construction Package Three. We will be moving forward with Ralston and the train underpass, but it'll still be a long time to come, so thank you so much.
Thank you, you're welcome.
And next up, Britton.
Yep. We just have one slide left here for the transportation projects, but just the takeaways, Ralston Road Phase Two, we got our final lift of pavement down, we have all travel lanes open to traffic, big milestone there and project completion date is spring. This includes all the landscaping, so we're just kind of waiting through winter here on that. Seventy Second Avenue, CP2, the majority of the final lift is down, little bit to finish in the spring there. With CP3, our Construction Package Three, we have sixty percent approval from the railroad. We have our site visit with UP tomorrow, that's a big milestone we've been waiting for. And then just, we've, we've presented this before, but we will have a gap between the CP2 and CP3 portions. We're anticipating about eight months at this point, but that continues to evolve. We didn't mention it tonight, but we mentioned it at the last quarterly update, but our finance department has issued the remaining debt on the original bond and that's, that's seven point two-three million. It'll be used on both projects as needed and we have drone flights on both projects every three weeks and those get uploaded to the city's website and, and YouTube platform, so have a look at those. With that, that's the end of the transportation portion. Mary is going to take over for the utilities.
All right. Good evening, councilors, and welcome to the new members. See if I can get this, oop, somehow I went way too fast. Here we go. Little bit different from what I've done in the last couple of these with a little bit of history, just to bring everyone up to speed and then a little bit of foreshadowing, teaser, we have a virtual tour at the end. So why do we have the water and sewer bonds? It's a direct result of Strategic Result Three, which asked or stated that we needed to do master plans and to develop implementation plans around the findings. The master plans identified significant amounts of work and to address that, bond funding was needed. The bonds also provide for generational equity in that the, as we pay back the bonds, the people who use what was paid for are using what, what is being paid for versus if we save up cash, then the people over here pay for what's over here in time. The water bond, fifty million with twenty million allocated towards growth and thirty million allocated towards R and R, which the repayment reflects that, forty percent from system development charges and sixty percent from rates and fees. The bonds are structured that we can use them on that long list of projects on the left with the vast majority of the money going towards the Ralston Water Treatment Plant work and gross reservoir. What can be just as important as what can we spend the money on is what, what are we not spending the money on, which is much of gross reservoir, replacement of the Arvada Treatment Plant, water line rehab, which is part of our annual program beyond this year, much of the smart meter rollout, much of the lead and copper rule compliance, which is a regulatory requirement, and then growth projects in the distribution system. Sewer bond is also fifty million, a little bit different allocation with thirty-four million on growth, sixteen million on R and R and again, the payment, repayment reflects that. The projects identified in the bond language are the interceptors, the North Trunk Line, which serves the north third of the city, the Central Ralston Trunk Line, which we like to say serves the middle third of the city, but it's a little bit wider than that. What's not financed by this bond is all of the identified interceptor work from the master plan on a capacity basis and the rehabilitation of port segments that don't need capacity, if they need rehab, that's not covered by this bond and then work on the smaller lines. Water projects, again, as I've done in the past, anything that's in bold with a strikeout is a change from the last time I presented. Gross reservoir, the bills have not come in quite as much as we thought they would, so we think we will have exhausted that twenty million in around, at around February instead of at the end of the year. The other change is the opposite direction on smart meters, which is we have managed to get those ordered and delivered and the portion of the bond we're allocating towards smart meters will likely be expended by the end of the year. The overall expenditures on the bond are not expected to change in that we expect to spend most of the water bond, if not all of it, by the end of next year. This bar graph, give a little bit on the shadings, the, the solid means what is a class one estimate, meaning it's under contract, it's a good solid estimate, that's how much money we are likely to spend. The diagonal line, which is really skinny on these, is a class three estimate, meaning we are in design and have a pretty good understanding and then that top bar is a class five estimate, meaning we're early in design or we're still at a concept. And where that's important is because obviously at a concept stage, the estimate is not as tight. In fact, a class five estimate is defined as plus one hundred or minus fifty percent. Same color coding here and this just shows how we expect to spend the bond money and shows we are looking at about the end of next year to expend all of it. The eighty-five percent is a requirement that we must spend eighty-five percent within three years, you saw that on the graphs for the transportation bonds as well and we expect that to happen sometime in the middle of twenty twenty-four. And if I didn't say it, the bonds were issued in December of twenty twenty-two, so we're right at about one year in. Sanitary sewer program, same thing around boulding and strikeout, with the exception of I didn't boulder and strikeout the preliminary design. It is now shaded because it is substantially complete. Our goal was the end of the year and the consultant did get us the report in very early November, so that actually came in ahead of schedule. CRT seven, which is Central Ralston Trunk through Davis Lane Park, has bumped out about a month and that's because the consultant needed another week or two on the drawings and now it's Christmas, we're going to be getting those final drawings in the next week and we decided to, to wait on putting out that bid until right at the beginning of the year. We're just not going to get good bids from contractors if we really push them over Christmas, New Year's. In fact, most contractors don't work between Christmas and New Year's, so, so everything got bumped about a month. And then NTL seven, that Sheridan and Seventy Sixth, that is now an ongoing project, we have a design consultant under contract. Continuing on sanitary sewer, that top line is the subtotal of what we have going on with a slight change in CRT seven's cost estimate as we've progressed in design, slightly more money is now expected for those projects. So we are leaving CRT nine on this list for now, we do not have full confidence we're going to be able to cover that project with this bond issue and that's in part because the preliminary design resulted in a recommendation of relocating the segments we call NTL two and NTL three and with that relocation, we need to do both two and three together because we're going to move them from a very narrow corridor, a long little dry creek up into Eighty Sixth Parkway. So you can't, it doesn't do us any good to only build half of it, we got to get all the way to where we're connecting into NTL four. The same graphs as we're showing for water, they look so much smaller because we kept the scale the same and we've talked about this before, that the water side right now has quite a bit more need than the sewer side. And then, and we've talked about before, the sewer program had less projects that were either in construction or construction ready when the bonds were issued, but again, we do fully expect to spend that eighty-five percent likely end of next year, beginning of the following year. A map of the projects, what's changed from the last presentation is NTL seven is now shown in bold, that's that eighty, Seventy Sixth and Sheridan, NTL two and the force main from Alchire is now shown in bold as I talked about and I think the rest is the same from the last time. Before I take us on a virtual tour, does anyone have questions?
I don't see any lights.
Okay.
More questions, sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Mormon, or Mayor Britton Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor. Mary, the, the smart meters you mentioned and, and my sense was that was, that was pretty popular and, and was a successful program. I would guess that we have a, a greater demand for that, is there opportunity to get more funding to continue that?
Yes, and I'm going to speak to it and if I misspeak, I very much want Chris or Sharon to speak up. There are some grants available, we are evaluating them and looking at what it would take to apply for them and how successful we would be. That grant funding is also one of the scope items, scope items in an ongoing RFP we have to help us identify outside financing. Did I, okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, and I don't see any other lights.
All right, okay.
Real quick, okay, never mind.
Katie's giving us, and the clicker didn't work when we tested right before, so Katie's going to run it for me. This is Google Earth with the bond funded projects that are underway. This is Google Earth with the bond funded projects that are underway, starting with the Ralston Water Treatment Plant. And what we've learned is Google Earth can be a little finicky. But this will take us around the city geographically. And then there should be pictures, which seem to be not working. Thank you, Katie. So continuing on the filters at the Ralston Water Treatment Plant, we are currently in the third set of filters that we are rebuilding. And then the next picture, I know Katie's trying to make it big and apparently it doesn't want to do it. And then there was also a picture on the solids handling, which was another major portion of the work. That's, it's not you. There we go, it came up. I think it takes a lot of bandwidth as part of the issue. So the next is, okay, is this the solids. And then the third one is gross reservoir. This picture came from one of their recent newsletters. We are just a participant. This is not our project per se, but as a participant, we are helping fund it. The 2021 water line is one of the annual water line programs. This was a very ambitious set of projects identified by our operations staff to really help with resilience and looping throughout the system, which is why it's 2023 and you're going to see the contract for this probably next month, even though it's labeled 2021. But one of them is this water line in Carr. We're going to be doing quite a bit of work on it. And then also annual water line, the 2324 project is the neighborhood in the vicinity of Kipling and 76th. And this is more along the lines of what we've seen for a number of years, which is replacing old asbestos cement line that was installed in the 70s. North Trunk four, this is one of the ones that we are saying is complete. It is going into warranty this week, which is very exciting. And the picture is of installed sod.
And thank you for all the great work that the contractors did. My neighbors love it. They feel like it's a huge improvement to the area.
That is very nice to hear, thank you. So Central Ralston Trunk seven, this is the one I said we're going to push out about a month because we don't want to try to bid over the holidays. This is a replacing sewer through the park and up Sims to 71st. I never remember if it's Avenue or Place. But anyway, we are expecting these final drawings, 100% design drawings this week or next week, but before Christmas. Central Ralston Trunk, this is a sewer that's on both sides of Ward Road, starting at about the playground on Central, I'm sorry, in Danny Kendrick's Park and then ending just south of the Apex Center for this phase. And this contract came before council last month. So we expect this to start up early in the year. North Trunk Line, this was one of the four priority projects that we talked about with the master plan results. We knew it would be complicated, complex and challenging, and it is continuing to be so with a number of jurisdictions in addition to the railroad. We are expecting 90% drawings. Actually, I'm sorry, we received 90% drawings. And we are going to be discussing those with the contractor before Christmas. Yeah, contractor and consultant. NT seven, this was also one of the four priority areas. If we can make the pictures work on this. I did not include the picture of council members looking down the maintenance hole. But this is the location where we popped a lid and everyone could see how shallow the sewer is and how full it is right there. This is now under design. And then the last stop on our tour is North Trunk two, which does include a new force main from the lift station, which is under construction right now. Just that was one of our four priority areas as well, as well as construction down 86th to help with the capacity issues we have in the sewer that currently runs down Little Dry Creek, right behind people's backyards in an extremely narrow corridor. I mean, there's a five-foot path with about two foot to the bank and about two foot to fences if you walk that much. And that's the end of the tour. And I think I have one more slide. All right, the same takeaways that we have talked about with each of these, which is the water bonds, projects were slightly ahead of the sewer in terms of where they were within the process. Those projects that are not under contract are class five estimates, meaning we hope we did a good job, but things can change. And that the water and sanitary projects listed are not the entirety of the need. And that goes back to the March and April 2022 presentations where we presented our plan to implement the master plan findings. And then I think that's it. Again, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Councilmember Marriott.
Have a question. Could you go back to the service line replacements and just give us an update on where you're at on that process and what decisions have been made?
Would love to pass that off to Sharon because that's not actually being handled by my team.
No problem.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So this is about the lead and copper rule coming from EPA that requires the city to identify where we may have lead or galvanized service connections to customers and then develop a program to remove those from our system. So our current status right now is we've reached out to about 600 homeowners where we're not sure, we suspect they may have a galvanized service line. We haven't found any lead service lines. But galvanized has similar type of health risk. And we're working with a contractor to coordinate with those homeowners to pothole in their yards to identify whether or not that their service line meets that galvanized or lead criteria. So that's our current status right now. We do have funding set aside from this bond issue to be able to fund replacement for customers. But that decision hasn't been made from a policy level yet. So we plan to bring that back to council and discuss that in 2024.
A quick question. So you've reached out to 600 property owners. Do you know how, do you have an idea how many of those are going to actually have galvanized or lead service lines?
I don't, I don't have an idea of that right now.
Okay. And as far as then the remediation of those or the replacement of those, that's a decision yet to be made. Do you have any idea when that might be made?
So we're contemplating different ways that we can do that. But we're looking at shortly after the first of the year with a couple of different options for what we could do as a city to support those property owners. You may be aware that Denver Water has, has made the decision to fully fund replacement. So that is something that we could do. But that isn't the only option. So it'll be first quarter 2024.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Mormon, do you have any additional questions?
All right, perfect. Then I have a quick question, Mary, regarding the potential sewer work, or the eventual sewer work at Carr around the 73rd, 74th. I know there are residents along that corridor. Will we be closing the road at any point to be able to do that work?
There will be detours. I don't know that we need to fully close the road for any extended period. That's actually water line work. And what we're going to do is there is an existing pipe there that's a transmission main. And we've done modeling that indicates we can take it down one pipe size. So rather than trying to dig up Carr Street, which is extremely congested, there's like two or three Excel lines, there's two sewer lines, there's two storm lines. We're going to use that existing pipe as a host pipe to do a slip line of a smaller pipe.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
So there will still be some traffic impact, but less than open cut.
Perfect, thank you so much. I'm glad, I'm very glad to hear that. If there are no additional questions from council, we will move on to the next workshop.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next workshop is going to be the infrastructure strategic results update provided by Jaclyn Root.
Good evening. I'm really excited to present to you this evening some updates on all the infrastructure work system strategic results. So I'm going to kick it off. And we did a similar presentation last year and we heard some feedback that you wanted to hear from those doing the work, the direct subject matter experts on where we're at and what's happening. And so in lieu of introducing everybody, I'm just going to ask that as everyone comes up to talk about their strategic result, please introduce yourself to our council. And we're going to talk a little bit about, we'll just go in order through all of our strategic results. And then Sharon's going to wrap it up with some takeaways. So in general, we're going to use a traffic signal format because we found that fun. We're going to talk about results that are really on track in the green, caution what we're monitoring, and then things that are off track. We're going to start with our team's interpretation of why this work is important, some of the key accomplishments that we've reached in 2023 and next steps. I've added the principles work here because any questions about work that is underway is going to be a continuing monitoring through service level measures. And we're going to really call this continuing work. So even if a strategic result is finished, there's still elements that we're carrying forward in all of our core work, our core principles. So we'll talk a little bit about that tonight, too. Before I start, I'd be sad to miss the opportunity to talk a little bit about a big accomplishment for the city and for our team specifically. We're going to be coming back to talk to you a little bit more. But as a preview, we went through a major reaccreditation process with the American Public Works Association. And what this looks like is we do a very detailed review of all of our policies, our practices, our procedures. We work with all of our teams to make sure everything reflects how we're doing work today. Then we have auditors come in from the accreditation council and go through and do a detailed review of our work. We're pleased to see that that review resulted in a recommendation to the council that we be reaccredited. And so we're really excited for that achievement. We'll, we'll share more details as we're officially, as that's officially announced. But just some takeaways of why it was important to me and I think the team would share in this is that it really helps strengthen our team. We have a lot of new team members who are new to this organization, who are trying to figure out how we do things the Arvada way. And so this really helped us look at our operations, strengthen some of our training, ask questions about why. So it helped us strengthen how we centralize and document our standard operating procedures or SOPs. And in general, it helped create some communication channels where they hadn't existed with some of our new team members and just emphasizes that culture of continuous improvement. So I just wanted to acknowledge that today because folded in with the strategic results that you directed us to work on, I just see this as such a core tenet for why we come to work and do what we do. So thank you for letting me talk about that. In front of you, we left a handout. One of them is really just a list of all the strategic results using those signal colors. And so I won't read everything off today, but we wanted to share with you both that as well as our year in review report that was published in the Arvada Report and is available on our webpage. So what we've done in that handout is provide more details to supplement what you'll hear tonight. And in some cases, while we've listed the strategic results that are complete, there are certain milestones that are still underway. So on this slide, when we talk about things in the blue, these are things that are complete at this point. And our, for example, our sewer master plan, our stormwater master plan, our water master plan might be complete. But in the in-progress categories, you'll see us talking about implementation of those plans. So you'll hear about that tonight. Green, things that are on track, still things underway. We're going to be talking a lot about those and continuing work with you next year. Yellow, these are things that are caution. While we've made a lot of progress, there might be some key milestones that are slipping for various reasons, and we'll talk about some of those things. And then red, things that are off track. So spoiler alert, Kim's going to talk to us a little bit about the facilities master plan. That is funded in 2024, so we expect to be able to catch up and make a lot of progress in that area. So the first team member I'd like to turn it off to, Craig, will you go ahead and come up?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Craig Kaler. I work with the Streets Maintenance Division. And I'm here to speak to you today about SR one, the Street Maintenance Master Plan. A review of the program structure, budget, maintenance and rehabilitation techniques and staffing is needed to evaluate the current level of service and align with community expectations. So we are, our status right now is yellow, we're in the caution. The primary reason for that, we haven't really received the full master plan yet from Benish and Jacobs, who we contracted to create that for us. So we prioritized a couple of things with them to try to push out soon as and later so we can begin implementation on some of those. And a couple of those things, well, our snow operations was our biggest priority. So they did complete that for us. And we're in our second season of being able to implement some of those things. A few of the things that we're, we are implementing include route optimization. So we have changed the way that we route all of our operators. That's been a big improvement for us. We have utilized using Garmin GPS technology in all of our trucks so that our operators, if they need any assistance, it tells them where to go. So that's really been good for us. And we have switched from eight-hour shifts to 12-hour shifts. The pavement program recommendations are also being implemented. And as we're going to continue to get the rest of that report, which we expect, I believe, sometime early next year, we'll be able to evaluate those and implement as we see fit. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I don't see any lights, Councilmember Mormon? All right, please continue.
Good evening. Again, I'm Sharon Israel. I'm the Director of Utilities for the city. I'm going to talk to you about strategic result two, which is waste hauling. And the status of this strategic result is complete. As you may recall, in July of 2021, we began service for curbside trash and recycling pickup across the city per council direction. And today, we have about two thirds of eligible city households are enrolled with our curbside service. We also have an accuracy rate of 99.99%, which exceeds our contractual requirements with our contractor for public services. Any questions?
I don't see any lights.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Katie. It's okay. Strategic result three is around master plans with utilities. I'll start with the sanitary sewer master plan. The why comes down to our written level of service, which I presented to council probably about 18 months ago. And that written level of service is that we do not have overflows for a 25-year storm at estimated build-out flows. And we defined overflow as meaning sewer not in pipes, sewage not in pipes. So that would include basements. That's not our current condition. That's why we have a lot of work going on in the bonds. But that really is our why, is to meet that written level of service. The milestone was met on 12, the milestone was 12/23 or right now for implementation, having an implementation plan, and obviously we're well into that. I think I talked plenty about that on the last presentation. Probably did on the water as well. Water master plan covers treatment and distribution. And the why is obviously because we all would like to continue to have high-quality potable water. But delving a little deeper, again, we have written level of service around our water system that takes us beyond the regulatory requirements. Our goal is that we always meet regulatory requirements, which means that in general, under normal conditions, we just have outstanding water so that we have some space, some wiggle room, if you want to call it that. When we have things come into the plant, maybe that aren't quite as nice. Think of a flood and how muddy the water can get. Milestones were met with the master plans completed by last December. And the implementation milestone was also right now, but obviously we have met that as well. And in fact, the distribution side, the master plan was in 2021. distribution side, the master plan was in 2019, and our goal is to update those about every five years. And so we are right now working on a scope of work to do an update on the distribution master plan. So I'd love to point out the pictures on this one. One of the findings of the treatment master plan was replacement of the Arvada plant, and that is the full pilot plant. We own the filter skid, and we are renting pre-treatment skids to help us test out what would be the most optimal thing to build. And then the one underneath is the solids work that's ongoing.
Thank you. Any council questions for Mary? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Melanie Walter. I'm the Flood Plane Administrator, and I'm going to talk to you about our stormwater master, storm sewer master plan. Storm sewer master plan was completed in 2021. We kind of were up in the air about whether to make this green or yellow. Green because the master plan is complete, but yellow because we haven't really identified a lot of the funding yet. The stormwater master plan was completed in 2021, and it provided recommendations in three distinct categories. The first category addressed citywide hotspots, which are defined as deficiencies in street or pipes that cause localized flooding. And as a matter of fact, that picture right there is 58th and Sims, if you remember that storm last June. That was an actual picture taken from that. And so our Drainage Improvement Projects Fund has been set up to address the drainage complaints, either from the community and staff, but it's also been set up to be used to upsize storm infrastructure, such as this, as other capital improvements or private development projects intersect these hotspots. The second category called for a disconnection of stormwater flows from irrigation canals. We're currently working with our Water Resources team to prioritize these locations, but no funding has been identified for this purpose. The third category recommends updates to three basin-wide studies. These are basins that intersect the highest concentration of hotspots, and all three are on the five-year plan and fully funded with our partnership with Mile High Flood District. So I understand you're on the board, yes?
Yes, just joined.
Yes, yay. So I'll see you at the next board meeting.
I will look forward to your significant level of expertise.
I hope I don't disappoint. So the infrastructure recommendations that will result from these studies, though, are not funded at this time. We anticipate a lot of infrastructure recommendations coming out of these studies, and we have not identified funding for those just yet. But we'll continue to leverage Mile High Flood District dollars to address these recommendations.
Any questions from council? No? Well, thank you very much. Britten, now it's your turn.
Now it's my turn. Strategic result number four is the pavement program plan. We've put this in the green level. We're on track to get our plan started here. We've issued a request for proposal. So we're hoping to get a consultant on board very soon to help us with that plan and to refine our needs and our funding gap, and then come back to council in 2024 to present that. Again, our goal is a pavement quality index of 70. Right now, we're sitting at 38, so we have a ways to go. Our 2023 program, we treated 95 lane miles this year. That is slurry seals, crack seals, the maintenance-type treatments. We treated also an additional 28 lane miles with mill and overlay or reconstruction. In that process, we have to replace deficient curb ramps, and we replaced 395 ramps this year. The next slide is just our 2024 anticipated program with the areas of the city that we'll be treating and moving forward. Strategic result number five, this is Ralston Road and West 72nd Avenue. We spent plenty of time on this on the last presentation, so I'll be brief. But we're on track to spend 85% of the original bond funds in March of next year. And again, that's combined with both projects. That's the original bond funding. With that, are there any questions from council?
I don't see any lights. Mayor Pro Tim Mormon? All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Kim Vega, I'm the manager of city facilities. First one I have here is the post office plans. This one is complete. The milestone M6A was to complete the concept design, which we did. At that time, was to be a complex for the courts and the police department. M6B was to provide the cost and the scheduling. Since that time, the post office lease expired in 2022, and we're currently in lease negotiations. As you know, we've extended it three times. We're looking for the best value with the post office and to make sure that we don't have any cost exposures. That building is 49 and a half years old, so it's a pretty old building. So that's that one. Am I doing this wrong? There we go. And then the one that's off track is the facility master plan. We did not get funding in '23. That was to be completed in '24. We do have funding now, so we're planning on getting this back on track. MC6 is the master plan. We'll get that finished by December of '24. And then MC6D, the one that's under caution there, we're going to complete that at the same time. So we're going to bring those two together. And then the last one will be completed, M6E, with the sustainability financial plan by December '25. The one thing that's green on this screen is to the right. If you look in the small print, we, this year, we're going to hit $300,000 in savings from our solar energy fields. That's huge. We've gotten two grants from the Colorado Energy Office, one for our fleet vehicles, eight charger, charging stations with two ports, so 16 total. And then public charging, we have nine stations with two ports. That's 18 total. We currently have five EV charging stations, four in the transit hub, one here at City Hall. And another major milestone that we're about to hit here is the Xcel Microgrid backup battery system at the Arvada Center. So we have no backup generator there. We got selected out of five communities or five different areas by Xcel two years ago to put this microgrid in. So we have battery backup that will support the Arvada Center for eight hours. So pretty major project. Right now, they're testing it. They're able to charge it and discharge it. So we're getting close to turning that system on.
Thank you for your work on that. It's impressive.
Thanks, Mr. Mormon. Then on the facility index, we're going to be looking at our master plan, but we're also going to incorporate the cost in our facility cost index. Similar to the PQI on the streets, we use an FCI index, and it's a percentage. So our goal is to keep that percentage below 10%. You can see that we're not going to quite do that. We got 99 facilities, almost a million square feet, average age is 40 years, replacement value totaling, that's today's dollars, at $249 million. And even though we're at 5.8% right now, if we do nothing, we climb pretty fast. And we get into the category we don't want to get into, which is the poor category. The 2024 budget, maintenance budget right now, we got about $731,000 that we'll have to spend next year on our maintenance budget for capital improvements. That concludes my slides. Any questions?
Councilmember Marriott?
Yeah. Do you, I know if you're in negotiations with the post office, you probably don't want to say, but can you give us an idea of what the anticipated range of lease rate you may get for the post office?
Right now, we're trying to get that appraisal for the fair market value balanced with the fact that it is a post office. We're looking at $14 a square foot.
Okay. And when a city leases a commercial building like that, is that a triple-net lease like the real world would be, or is it different?
It's different. We have to go off of the post office lease, but we can negotiate. So mostly, the capital improvements, we can negotiate, the maintenance, and then the lease cost.
Okay. And being that that's a city-owned building, even though it's leased to somebody else, is that a tax-free transaction, so there's no property tax at that facility?
Not sure if I can answer that. Brian's shaking his head, yes.
This is the case. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. Any additional questions? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I promise this is the last time you have to listen to me tonight.
We love you, Mary.
Thank you. Water supply master plan. This is being worked on hand-in-hand with really close teamwork between utilities engineering and the water resources staff. The strategic result was to continue our progress on having 100% of water supply needed for build-out, which we think gross reservoir will get us to. But part of this was to do a master plan and build a new model so that we can confirm that. Again, this was one that struggled. Is it green or is it yellow? We are on track to meet deadlines. However, we don't know what the master plans are going to say, and I say plans because there's two. And we strongly suspect there might be some additional funding needs that come out of it, and so that's why we're saying yellow. So our level of service is defined for water supply as well, and that's around how much water we have under various levels of drought, as well as how we use our water rights. The first master plan we're working on with a consultant is a new model around water supply. And that new model will allow us to test and evaluate, is it better for us to use more of our own, use more of Denver Water? How can we incorporate the gross reservoir capacity into how we use our water rights? The other piece that we're doing is we're doing an infrastructure master plan that's centered on the raw water infrastructure. Currently, we're doing that in-house, although we did reserve a small amount of funds to bring in people to evaluate structural and electrical if we feel that is needed. So both of these are on track to be completed in the first quarter of next year, at which point we can start looking at what would be needed for implementation. The last milestone that is in progress is working with Denver Water and continuing on funding for that gross reservoir capacity. Are there any questions?
Actually, seeing no lights, I have a quick one. So you mentioned briefly that gross reservoir is anticipated to cover 100% of our anticipated build-out water needs.
I think we all have a gut feeling that it will, but we want to confirm that.
I understand. Thank you very much. All right. Seeing no additional lights or questions. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, council. Jenny Wolfshug, City Engineer. I would like to say I get the easy one tonight. So I am going to talk to you about strategic result number eight, which is our engineering standards and specifications update. So if you may remember, back in 2022, we did a complete overhaul of our standards and specifications. We rewrote the entire book. That was a major lift on all of our staff across the city. But it's important that we do this work because this is the foundation for all the other work you're hearing about tonight. These are the standards that everything that's a public improvement is built to in the city. And so we want to make sure that it's built to the highest quality that we can get, and that it is going to meet our needs for a long period of time. So with that, we did our major overhaul in 2022. I came back earlier this year with an update to those with some minor modifications, and we are continuing to monitor that book and keep a list of minor modifications. So I'll be coming about, back about every year, with minor modifications as we move forward, but we have a pretty solid plan in place to continue that into the future.
Seeing no lights. Perfect. I'll call up strategic result number nine.
Good evening, everyone. So my name is Mazidul Hussein. I'm the Traffic Engineer. I'm going to talk about the transportation master system plan, strategic results nine. The reason its status is caution because by the time we got the funding and tried to hire a contractor, it took a little bit of time because we had to go twice to get a consultant. The first round of consultant selection process, we received only one proposal, and it didn't meet some of the criteria that we are looking for. So we got delayed almost six months before we started. Around May, we start, I think around May of 2023, we hired a consultant, and the contract negotiation went through, and the contract got in place. We started the project around the end of the May or early June. We made a significant progress since then, actually. So there are multiple initiatives that has been undertaken, and some of the major milestones has been achieved so far, but there are a few more milestones still needs to move forward. One of the major milestones we achieved, a very robust community engagement survey has been done, and community outreach has been done. We have received a significant amount of feedback that we, our consultant, start reviewing and summarizing those information in a format. That's something we all can understand, and understand the underlying issue of the transportation. The other components that has been completed is a very robust existing condition analysis has been done. It's a pretty significant data-driven process that our consultant team has been undertaken. So combination of that community engagement and community input with the data-driven process, we're going to combine those three information to identify or kind of assess the existing condition of our total transportation system. That deliverable is going to be delivered to us by the end of this month, and we're going to go through the review process internally. And once we review that process, the next milestone is going to be, we're going to paint the picture of our future transportation based on what transportation demand is going to be in our network, and then documentation and adaptation process. So that's the process we are going to go through next, from January 2024 to the end, kind of middle of 2024. And we are hoping to come back, sometimes in October, there is a workshop session has been planned, and we'll be able to come back and present that enter transportation system plan. So that's pretty much the overall updates for these strategic results of transportation system plan. Any questions?
Thank you. Councilmember Mormon has his hand raised.
Yes.
Thank you. I get a significant amount of residents informing me about challenges with traffic-like signals. Is part of this to evaluate that and look at how we can update and improve our traffic-like system?
Yes, definitely. Definitely. I mean, there are some passive data source that we have collected and would help us to identify the critical areas that why we need more improvements in our traffic signal system. In addition to that, there are other parallel efforts is undertaken. One is going to be our traffic signal master maintenance plan. In addition to that, there are other operational and maintenance effort is undergoing as a part of our regular activities. So we are, we'll be working on three different projects on signal timing. One is going to, one just got bid out, West 86 Parkway. 80th Avenue is going to be another project that will be undertaken in coordination with Dr. Cog. 64th Avenue is another project that we are teaming with Dr. Cog also. The preliminary data and everything has been collected, and will be shared. and will be shared with Dr. Cog to come up with a signal timing plan that something will be implemented sometimes in next year. So, as you know, that we have almost 110 signalized intersection. We have taken a very programmatic planned approach to improve the infrastructure because if we don't improve the signal infrastructure, it would be hard to implement an optimal signal timing plan to provide a better traffic operational experience to our travelers. Again, there is a significant amount of work has been undertaken in addition to the TSP. TSP definitely is going to flash out all those details, but we cannot just wait for TSP to be completed. There are other parallel efforts has been undertaken.
Thank you for that, and I did let City Manager Gillis, and I'd like to have a workshop just specifically on our traffic-like signals, so I hope that that can be scheduled.
Thank you. Ms. Gillis, we will discuss this, so, thank you. Any additional questions? All right. And with that, we'll move on to strategic result number 10.
Hello again. I'm here to speak about strategic result 10, which is creating a comprehensive environmental regulatory compliance program. You'll see this one is yellow, which is caution, and that's largely because we pushed the milestones that we had calendared in for 2023 into 2024. Our status quo, as you may recall, is we are pretty decentralized around environmental compliance across the city. We have had some challenges with enforcement. So, the first step for us is to look holistically at all of our city ordinances and federal requirements, and then make a recommendation to our city manager. So, we are calendared to do that in quarters one and two of 2024 with a goal by the end of 2024 to have that programmed into a workforce plan and any budget and resource recommendations. In the meantime, we are stepping up the use of existing tools. We've been doing more work this year with our code enforcement team and working to bring cases in front of the municipal judge. We've been doing more work around stop work orders, which is a very effective way to get immediate attention and streamlining those processes along with our engineering inspectors. And then, as council may recall, one of the FTE approved in the 2024 budget is a new stormwater inspector, so that's going to help us make some progress in this area as well. Any questions?
I see no lights, so thank you so much, Sharon.
I'm going to stay up here because I'm also strategic result 11. Okay, so Fleet Electrification Study, this was a new strategic result a couple of years ago, and we're green and on track for this. In 2023, we got a $55,000 grant from Excel Energy to do a telematics study of our fleet, which was a way for us to collect data, put little transponders in a select number of vehicles in our fleet, and we were able to work with a consultant who is an expert at this and identify which vehicles may be best suited for electric replacement. We've also been successful getting some grant awards for charging infrastructure that can be used by both the public and the city. And we currently have two Chevy Bolts on our team. I also wanted to point out that our work here in Arvada has been highlighted as an example on driveelectricusa.org, which is a multi-state project led by Clear Cities Coalition. So, we're really proud of that. So, the ongoing work in 2024 is to prepare a comprehensive report on what we found from a telematics study and make some recommendations for fleet electrification. If you're following this at all, electric vehicles are quite much more expensive than traditional ICE or internal combustion engine vehicles. So, we are looking at what the economic benefit is from a lifecycle cost standpoint. We're also continuing to look for grant funding where it's available and looking forward to the work being done in the year ahead on the sustainability plan for the city and starting to look at greenhouse gas emissions overall in the context of fleet. There are alternative fuel options. We've got hybrids, for example, that can reduce our carbon emissions and still be economical. So, more to come by second quarter of 2024 on that. Any questions?
I see no lights. Council, Mayor Pro Tim Mormon?
All right.
All right, I think we're good.
Thumbs up. All right, I'm going to take it home then. All right, year in review. So, I'd like to point out that if you look in your Arvada report, the latest issue, on page eight is a highlight of our infrastructure wins for the year. And so, we're really proud of this. We appreciate working with the communications team, highlighting so many of the wonderful things that our team has accomplished this year. I also want to mention, we couldn't do it without the 250 people that work in the infrastructure work system. They bring their talent, their passion for serving the Arvada community every single day. They're on 24/7/365. And so, I just, I want to say I couldn't be more proud to work with the team that we've got. You heard from a few of them tonight, but we just have so much love and passion and care for this community across our team. And I think what I'd like to do, next slide, please, is as I wrap up, I was reflecting on how this is our strategic plan update for the year. So, if you'll indulge me, I'm going to read the paragraph that describes the infrastructure work system. This is from the strategic plan. "The community depends on a well-maintained foundation of streets, sidewalks, and water, wastewater, and stormwater facilities. Planned and steady population growth requires proper maintenance of existing infrastructure, including city buildings and fleet, as well as additional capacity to support a thriving community." So, you heard a lot about that tonight. You heard about $180 million of bond projects. You heard about us thinking about the next generation of infrastructure and what systems and structures that we need for the future of Arvada. You also heard us talk about the level of service we want to provide. We're trying to do a lot of work around defining level of service, striving to quantify it so that you, as a council, have what you need to make decisions for the community. One example comes to mind is the Facility Condition Index. You'll see that, you know, it's a number. It is what it is. And so, what we'll be recommending to you in that and other contexts in the year ahead is where we think the level of service can be, and we're looking forward to getting continuing direction from council on that. So, on behalf of the 250 employees of the Public Works and Utilities Departments, I do want to thank council for all the support that you provided that got us here, that got us the accomplishments in the Arvada report, that helped support all the bond work that's ongoing. And we love to do this, and we really, really appreciate that we have the ability to work for today's community and for the future of Arvada. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you to everyone who came and presented this evening. Great job, all of you. I know how hard you work. I know how hard your teams work. So, from all of us, thank you to all of you. All right, now that the workshops' agenda are closed, are there any staff updates? None for me.
None from Legal.
All right. Well, if that is that, then I would say this workshop is adjourned.